Good evening, welcome to the zoning board meeting of August 5th at 7:11 PM. In accordance with the relating to the 2020 nor coronavirus outbreak emergency, the August 5th, 2020, 7 o'clock PM, public meeting in the Norfolk zoning board of appeals shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to the meeting shall be made utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software or remote access to software allow users to view the meeting and send comments or questions to the chair via the raise your hand function. The meeting will be recorded for future rebroadcast by Norfolk Community Television. To attend the meeting, please sign in using your first and last name. You must do that to be recognized by the administrator. If you wish to ask or provide comment, please use the raise your hand feature available when you click your name on the arrow at the does not work, you can certainly just raise your hand or raise your voice and ask, could you be recognized? Tonight, we have a couple of public hearings at 7 o'clock. We have 46 Miller Street for a special permit and at 7:05, we have 112 Myrtle Street for a variance. After that, we have a couple of approved minutes and hopefully we can do some deliberations. Ask Joe Sebastiano to read into the record. The public notice for 46 Miller Street, a special permit.
And I can do, I can do that and I do have it up on my own screen, so thank you. Notice hereby given in accordance with chapter 48 Massachusetts general laws and all amendments thereto. And in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter of 38, section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals on August 5th, 2020. This meeting shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be made utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software, HTTPS forward slash vote slash zoom dot us for remote access. The meeting will be recorded for future rebroadcast, but rebroadcast by Norfolk Community Television. Steven and Janet Yavaro at 7:00 PM for special permit pursuant to Massachusetts general law, chapter 48, section 9 is amended and section F4A of the Norfolk zoning bylaws to allow the alteration or enlargement of an existing nonconforming structure, which doesn't violate the setback coverage or height requirements of section E1B to a greater extent than the original structure. This property is located at 46 Miller Street, assesses map three, block eight, lot seven in the R2 zoning district. Hopefully you heard all that.
Thank you, Joe. Amy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Amy?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me? You can't hear me? Can anybody hear me?
I can hear Amy and Chris.
I can hear you.
Chris, are you there? Chris is, looks like he's on mute now. You're on mute, can you hear me now?
Can you hear me, Amy?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me? Well, it seems like Chris is having some technical difficulties.
Amy?
Oh, hi, Chris.
Okay, am I back?
Yep, you're back.
All right, hopefully the, we will lose the connection.
Yeah.
All right, so I know Joe read into the record, the public notice, so Stephen, I think you and your wife are here, the floor is yours. Why don't you present what you're, you're trying to do, okay?
Basically, all we're doing is just building a deck, a nonattached structure to the house. It's doesn't, doesn't go any further back or encroachment on the street or in the back lot line. So 20 by 12 foot unattached platform, basically.
I can put up a picture of it in just a minute.
Amy, can you hear me?
Yes. I'm looking for the, the plans. We should have them.
And Chris, I'll look for clarification on what nonattached means.
It's, I didn't, I didn't want to to attach the, the deck to the house because I would have had to put pilings in and there's the, the outflow line from my septic flows right underneath there. And I know that when I start digging, I'd probably hit one of those lines, so it's, it's basically a floating platform. It's, it's basically ground level.
We'll let Amy bring up the plans.
Okay, so is this the, the plan that was in with your application, right?
Yep.
Okay. Can you all see that?
Yes. Amy, am I back on?
Yep. Chris, you were frozen, now we can't.
Amy, can you?
Yep, I actually heard you enter your meeting ID. Oh, boy. You're gone again. Oh, that's Chris.
It is pretty clear according to the plan, it is pretty clear according to the plans that we're looking at a 12 by 22 deck unattached. It doesn't violate any of the setbacks, any worse than the original structure does.
Chris, can you hear us?
Yeah, yeah, now I'm on the phone. Obviously, the Zoom connection with Comcast is still a problem, so I'm gonna have to do this via the phone. So I think Joe was asking a few questions, is that right?
Yeah, he just explained to us the reason, what does unattached mean in this particular application? But it's pretty clear that we have a 12 by 22 unattached deck that's proposed. And because it wouldn't violate the existing setbacks, setbacks that are, it would be never worse than the existing setbacks are now. The, the plan's pretty laid out, the plan's laid out pretty clearly, if I'm correct.
Correct, right, it looks like he's 17 feet to the rear setback and the deck looks a little shorter than that and he's 28 feet to the front setback. And obviously, the deck is shorter than that, it's a nonconforming lot. But because it does require our approval, because it's a, the setbacks are not met on either side. So, yeah, so we have a 12 by 22 deck. And the reason he unattached was, was there a reason for that?
Yeah, it, there's a septic outflow line that goes right underneath that area. And I didn't want to do pillars because I knew that once I started digging, it probably hit one of the, that line. And so I figured the easiest way to go would be just to a floating platform, basically. It's a ground level, it's a ground level deck.
Sure, makes sense, okay. All right, very good.
And clearly, clearly, the, the rear setback of the existing structure is the 17, is it just 17 equal, 17 dot O?
I think that's to the chimney, it's probably 19, actually.
Yeah, to the deck, okay.
Well, no, to the deck will be more than 17, oh, 19 to the deck a little bit? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, most likely 19.
Right, but again, not any worse or any more nonconforming, got it?
No.
Right, it's less, it's less nonconforming than the original house. All right, anybody, Josie, any questions? By the way, Josie, because of the problems with the Comcast connection for me, Josie, you are acting as our fifth member tonight, it's a special permit, so we need all five voting members. So you will be voting tonight, Josie, in the absence of Don Hanson and Tim Martin, okay, Josie? All right, any other questions? Josie, any questions for the applicant?
Uh, no, I'm just, I'm just looking here, it seems like you have this all figured out. I am, I do have one question, if, since it's going to be free floating, approximately how far from the house is it going to be?
Couple inches, maybe.
Oh, okay, so they'll be able to actually step from the house onto the platform?
Yeah.
And I'm assuming it's going to require like new footings?
Yeah, it's, it's all laid out in the plans that I submitted to the building department.
Okay, are you planning on putting any heavy grills on there or?
Railing.
Okay. Okay, and are you pressure treated wood?
Pressure treated and composite deck and then wrapped with PVC.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Did you say railing, did you say railing, sir?
Yeah, it doesn't need it though, it's only like eight inches off the ground.
Right, okay, but you may be putting railings around it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kevin, any questions?
No, I think this makes sense.
Yep.
No, no questions.
Okay. And Mike, any questions?
All set.
Okay, all right. With that, any, is there any butters or anybody attending tonight who have any questions?
I see no.
Amy, any butters?
Nope, I see no questions.
Okay, great, all right. At that mo, at that, at that, do we, do I have a motion to close the public hearing for 40, for 46 Miller Street?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Devin will second.
Any further discussion? Okay, because we're in this position, I will do a roll call vote to close the public hearing, Mike Caliza.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi.
Joe Sebastiano, Joe, Joe Sebastiano.
Yes, to grant, Joe Sebastiano.
No, we're not doing, yes, we're closing the public hearing, Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, sorry.
I'm just doing, I've just closed the public hearing, but since I can't see any of you, we're gonna do the roll call vote tonight again, okay?
All right, so Joe Sebastiano, yes, to close the hearing.
Yes, Devin Howell.
Devin Howell, yes.
Josie Cudera.
Yes.
Christopher Weeder, yes, okay. Close the public hearing, Stephen and Janet, we will, I think we'll be able to get to this tonight to deliberate it and you can check in with Amy tomorrow and verify that we've done that, okay? Thanks very much for your patience tonight, I'm sorry that Zoom is affecting us a little bit here, but we'll get through it, thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Okay, great. All right, it is now 7:26 and we have our second public hearing this evening, which is a continuation. And it's 112 Myrtle Street, a variance request. And this is from Dennis Shore and Teresa McNally, Teresa is actually the owner. So Teresa, again, I apologize that I can't see you, but I'm gonna turn it over to you. I think when we last left you, you were going to talk to the neighbor because we're, we were only off a few inches on your property to his property. You were gonna talk to him and see if there was anything he could do to help you out as far as purchasing a piece of his property. I think we received a letter which stated that though they supported you and were in support of your project, he was not willing at this time to sell any of his property. So, and we did receive that, so we don't, we do know that you actually reached out to him to request this and I'll turn it over to you now.
Can you all hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Great. So, so first, I, I just want to say how much Dennis and I appreciate, you know, you all considering this request. We're well aware that variances are, you know, taken very seriously. And we appreciate you giving us several continuances to give us the time to try and work with our neighbor. We appreciated the advice that you gave us in trying everything we possibly could to work with the neighbor. And we spent weeks and, you know, were very receptive to the variance and that's why they wrote the letter. I, I have to say that very pleased with the letter, their support in letting us be able to, to do what we wanted to do with this room. So with that, I want to just remind the board, you know, this is a room on the back of the house, as you can see from this drawing. It is probably the only room in the entire, what was once a seven bedroom inn built in 1802. We renovated much of the house, all of the upstairs, a good portion of the downstairs, and this is the last piece of the puzzle. The room that we're trying to, to join with the back of the house is one of the, you know, very old foundations of the house. The room inside is really more than a functional room. It has a red brick, ramenium floor, a ceiling that is caving in and it's basically just a gateway to what was the only bathroom in this inn. And, you know, I think one of the, you know, assumptions is that maybe this was an outhouse that at some point was just joined to the edge of the house. And I think that explains a lot about why it's configured the way it is and basically just not a usable room. Right now, it's just a catchall, there's an old utility sink in there. The room is really too small to, for it to be functional for really anything else. There's an old dryer in there, you know, it's, it's something that we have, you know, wanted to, to make a functional room for a very long time. We hope that the board will consider, I'm gonna ask Dennis to talk a little bit about, you know, the shape of the lot and sort of the challenge that we have, you know, with, with trying to join this to the edge of the house given the, you know, shape and, and size of this lot. I don't know, Amy, if, before I turn it to Dennis, if you could, I, I thought it would be helpful to see of what we're talking about, aside from just the plot plan. So basically, you can see on the red brick part is, the room is just inside of that and the part that juts out here is, has the bathroom upstairs and underneath is just the pipes for the bathroom. The red, the bricks, you can see Dennis will talk about the foundational challenges that we have and why that needs to actually be moved out and joined to the ends of the house. So I don't know, Dennis, if you want to kind of talk about some of the challenges we've had with, with part of our house?
I guess it goes back to the reason that we, you know, have come to you folks in the beginning. We sort of inherited a, you know, a really challenging property line that makes this weird angle. And if that property line was just over a little bit, it, it, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be going through this whole exercise. But in the, in the short history on that was that the Langs who owned the house before we did, they owned the adjacent lot, so they owned all the land. They chose to, sometime in the 1980s, they sold the, the lot next door. And when they reconfigured or, you know, redrew the property lines, they came in awfully close to our house and you can see where the property line makes this really sudden angle change that it's really working against us, so it's presenting a really neat challenge that way. So the other thing that Teresa was alluding to, and she probably mentioned the back brick foundation wall. We're hoping to, you know, do the addition and do it. Part of the reason being that this is a real source of cold for us in the winter, we have freezing pipes on a cake. Because this is the only fully exposed foundation wall we have on the house in this area. And, and it's literally brick and mortar, it's, it's not very thick. So amongst other things, we're, we're looking to expand and create a little more functional space. That's the whole reason for the addition. But in doing, we can structurally improve a lot of things here that are, you know, otherwise less, less than desirable, you know, and that's the short version. And the other thing, we didn't mention, certainly in our initial meeting, that our lot, being that the house was built in 1802, it's nonconforming, it's too close to the street. So we're, I don't know if it's a factor, but we're already nonconforming, just by virtue of the edge of the house. Things like that, so the property line has presented a unique challenge because we're only looking to come out, you know, to do a very small addition. But, you know, we, we need that additional 17 or 18, whatever it is. And we're obviously not getting it. Yeah, but we're not, we're not getting it via, you know, purchasing land or trading land with the neighbor, so. So you're our only option, so. So thanks, let's see if you have any more questions for me.
Great, I'll, I'll first turn it over to the board and then we'll, I'll ask some questions. Questions from the board, just please state your name and then ask Doug or, or Teresa, Dennis or Teresa a question, Devin?
Uh, yeah, so Devin Howell, my question is, just to be clear, so that house where that bump out is, that was all constructed originally with the house, is that correct?
No, the original part of the house was built in 1802.
Yep.
This, this back part of the house we're looking at likely was done in the,
We don't know.
We, we don't know, speculating, late 1800s, early 1900s, quite a while ago.
But it's the only bathroom for the house when we moved in. So, you know, the, this was in, you know, an inn and, you know, this was the only bathroom that was likely at some point an outhouse. And so when actually it was attached to the house, we, we really don't know. But it has to have been there for a long time because it's the only, was the only bathroom.
Okay. That was my only question, so right now.
Okay.
So it's not as though, yeah. I, I think maybe there was, looks weird and doesn't join to the house for some reason. But I think it's only just, you know, joined at some point so that you could access it from inside the house.
If anyone can see this photograph or the prior.
Yeah, they can see it.
The photograph that was up before. But previously, we were looking at a plan view of the drawing, but this actually, this, this photograph in particular shows you what we'd really like to do and it's to extend this left end of the building here. So we square off with this, the existing part of the building there that pokes out where the ladder and things are right there. So so I think that's helpful to see that. There's also a basement door here, which is always a pain, you know, along the way, we want to redo that so we can get in and out more easily. That, it's, it's too short and it's never really worked that well, so anyway, that goes to the construction part, so. Right. Okay. Joe, do you have any other, do you have some questions, Joe?
Yeah, this is Joe.
Joe?
You can see, I can see you want to square this off according to the plans. How, would this be a one story or how tall would this be?
Only, only as tall as that, the structure you see there, you see the roof on the, the part of the structure that sticks out.
Okay.
And so it's only gonna go to the first story level.
Okay.
And we can figure the roof in some way, but we have no intention to go up to the second story.
Okay, so I just need clarification on the actual variance dimensions. So when you go back to the plans, I just want to make sure I understand what the variance is actually asking for one more time? Yeah, that, at these plans here, so I see the square off area in the plans. So what, how much variance are we looking for here? The setback, it's, because the setback has to be a certain amount, but you're gonna be less than the required setback, if I'm correct?
Right, right. They're looking, they're actually at 23.5 to the rear setback, Joe, I think obviously we need 25, is that right, Dennis? Amy, can, can they hear me?
Yeah, I heard you, Chris, I just got, is it 25 is the requirement?
The requirement is 25 in the rear.
All right, and yeah, they're showing 23.3, I think it is? Yeah, it's going 23. 23.3, and then the same thing, are we worried about the side as well?
Nope, the side is a 25.5. Eight, and that meets the side setback.
Yeah, it's 25.5 on the plans, but that still meets 25, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just making sure there's no setback, the setback for rear isn't supposed to be bigger than 25?
No, 25 is the requirement in the R3 district.
Okay, okay. All right, so I, I just wanted to make sure I understood the dimensional variance requirement, okay? That, that would be my only questions then.
Okay, hey, Dennis, what is your front setback?
Well, currently, um, I've got to top my head, I can't, I can't even tell you, but it's, I think it's less than 50 feet.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
I don't know if we can tell on the drawing.
No, I don't think we can, I can't, and again, I'm, I'm looking at a, a hard copy, so I can't tell.
Yeah, it'd be hard to tell.
I can give you an approximate dimension scaled off the drawing if you want. So if I scale, it's about 38 feet or so to the porch.
Yeah, under 50, okay.
Okay.
Which you can see there's a building offset line dash that goes through the house.
E, okay.
That's, that's the 50 foot setback.
Yeah.
If I could just add something for a moment, I, I think while we're talking about property lines, if you look to the right of the house, you can see the property line is 26 feet or so. And it sort of parallels the house, not exactly. But then it becomes so evident when we get further down, it makes this really weird angle change and then continues on, so this is what we're battling right here, this, you know, why did that, why the engineers drew the lines like this, I'll, I'll never know. That's what we inherited.
Yep, yep. Mike, any questions?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, Josie?
Okay, Josie?
Hi, um I'm Josephine. I did have a couple of questions. Uh are we going to be uh is your intention to tamper at all with the existing foundation? And will you be loo- losing a window doing this?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by tamper, but um when we do the addition, we have to do some additional concrete foundation work. So we in effect will be creating a new foundation. And you know, it'll supersede the existing foundation, although what whatever we need to do structurally to hold the up the end of the house will will um do what's appropriate.
Okay. About window, the the only window that there is part of that room. So when you um extend the room out to meet ends of the building, you know, you'd have to, you know, also have the window move with it. Uh that makes any sense?
Sure, sure. Um also, I'm trying to see where the, I'm just curious where the septic is in relation to this room.
It's uh it's way over to the left.
It's not part of the, it's not in the area of the construction. It's not.
Okay. I'm just like, with the vent pipe would be probably in the middle. Um
But actually, the 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 pipe, the pipe that exits to and goes through the tank is uh way outside of the area we're talking about. Yeah, we're not, we're not in going into that or over it or anything. It's excluded from the area.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had. Thanks.
Okay, good. Good. And Teresa, I think you you told us that this room is basically unusable at this point in time.
Yeah, I mean, there's an old utility sink in there. Um it's basically the gateway to the bathroom. It's it's so, you know, small and, you know, dysfunctional that it's the only piece of the house that we've been waiting to fix. And um it doesn't make sense unless you can extend it to make it anything functional.
Okay.
Structure.
And again, you um you pretty much exhausted any hope of uh the Santos's a small piece.
You know, it we we spent a long time and um, you know, a lot of effort because we know that would been the, you know, the greatest outcome here. Um but it just, you know, there's a lot of history um on on their side that has nothing even to do with us, that they just, you know, support the variance but do not want to change the property lines.
Okay. Now, I had a, I had a, I have for the other board members, I had a chance to uh uh go out there, the uh issue, the uh Teresa and Dennis were not home, but I did get a chance to go out there and look at the property. And um it is actually very strange that why a property that appears to have started off as a rectangle suddenly took a sharp turn to the left and then went into a triangular type form as you go towards the rear of the property. So um it it does, it is definitely inconsistent with uh the zoning, especially in R three or any other zoning that we typically see. So I did have a chance to look at that. And um it doesn't make a lot of sense why this property suddenly was uh jogged to the left side. That being said, does anybody uh, do we have any, Amy, do we have any butters present who have any questions?
No. Anne Marie Bettis, Donna Johnson, Donna Jones are here, but I don't think they have questions.
All right. Any other members from the board before we close the public hearing? Hearing none, I guess we um, could I then, could I have a motion to close the public hearing for a variance request for one twelve Myrtle Street for a small proposed addition thirteen by seven?
Before you say that, Chris, I did have a question. Are we proposing this against the shape of the property? Is that, was that clear from the discussion?
Well, that will, that will be, that will be during our deliberations, Joe.
Okay, very good. All right. I'm sorry, Chris. Could you just repeat the motion again?
Uh the motion would be to close the public hearing for a variance request, chapter forty-eight, section ten for one twelve Myrtle Street for a small addition thirteen by seven at one twelve Myrtle Street in the R three district.
I I so moved. Joseph Bastiano.
We have a second? Do we have a second?
Devin, second.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Okay. Seeing on Mike Kaliza, close the public hearing?
Hi.
Joseph Bastiano, close the public hearings?
Yes.
Devin Howell, close the public hearing?
Hi.
Joseph Cordera, close the public hearing?
Josephine, where are you?
Yes, I'm here, yes.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Nice to you.
Chris, Christopher Weider, hi. Uh Teresa and Dennis, thank you very much. Um we do appreciate your uh work in trying to resolve this without having to come before the board. We will, um I think we're gonna try to deliberate this tonight. And again, you can check with Amy tomorrow. And uh she can give you the results and and let you know what um what the future, what the future plans you have to make are, okay?
Great. Thank you very much for considering it and for all the time that you've spent um working through this with us.
Thanks. Have a good night and have a good vacation.
Yeah, thank you. Bye bye.
Night. Okay. All right. Um with the uh, at the pleasure of the board, would you either like to deliberate these first and then do the minutes? Or do you want to do the minutes first and then deliberate? Anybody have any, any uh preference?
Can we get the minutes out of the way? There's so many of them.
All right, we can do that, Joe, if you want. So we'll start with, I think we have, I know Joe likes to get these done. We will start with June third, I think is the first set of minutes we have. June third. Has everybody had a chance to review the June third minutes?
Yes.
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 Thank. Um all right. The only thing I noticed, Amy, is um on page two.
Yep.
Um I guess it's one, two, three, four, five, the sixth paragraph where you say, Mr. Marver discussed the eight by ten bus stop structure.
Okay.
Sentence says, last sentence says landscape screening is proposed at the toe of the riprap slope. I think you mean top, maybe not toe.
Hmm, I think he said toe. But I, you know what?
Toe, okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna re-listen, but you could be right. I'll check.
All right. And then, and then in the last paragraph, it says, Mr. McGrath suggested that prior to any house construction, both proposed roadways should be brought up to binder. He might have, I don't know if he said brought up to binder. Usually it is would be both proposed roadways have the binder installed or, you know, binder coat installed. I don't, I've never heard Bill use the term should be brought up to binder, but it's actually installed binder coats. So if you could check that.
Sure, I will.
And um and again, on the next page, Dave Diamond is um is D I M O N D. Is that correct? The spelling is correct there?
Yes, it is. Yeah, I've double checked that.
Okay. Yep. And later in that paragraph, it talks about the hundred and twenty day estimate for construction should not vary too much. Could you check that? I don't know why, a hundred and twenty day construction for that project. I don't know what that was in reference to, but if you can just check the one hundred and twenty day estimate for construction.
Okay, sure will.
And then on top of page four, you say, Mr. Blank suggested adding verbiage regarding the appeal period during the state of emergency to the decision.
Okay. I've met Mr. Blank. He's a very nice man.
Yes, I've heard that, I've heard that, I've heard that. Um anybody else have any comments with regards to the June third minute, meeting minutes?
Nothing to add.
Hearing none. Uh hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the June third, twenty twenty, meeting minutes?
As amended. Joseph Bastiano.
As amended. Do we have a second?
Second, Mike Kaliza.
Um all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, good. We got that one, Joe. All right. Next one is, I think, June seventeen. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
Yes.
Don't all speak at once.
I said yes.
Okay. Uh the only thing I noticed on this, which I think is in the uh third or fourth paragraph, in response to questions from Mark and Chris Henry, I think you meant Martha.
Okay.
And further down that same paragraph, and you know better than I, Amy, I think board members is two words. It might be one, but I think it's two words.
Yeah. Um Michael always gets me on that. I must have missed it. Okay.
That's all right. And then in the second page, you've got Peter Chipman, no address, but I'm sure you're putting in an address for Peter Chipman.
Yep. I did miss that, but I will.
Uh and Devin, you might have recalled this in the second, the first paragraph of the second page. They um they reference Cape Cod berm everywhere else throughout. Concrete firms were a paved surface, but it's a walkway. Do you remember was that concrete firm? Usually we say granite firms, but I think because it's a concrete sidewalk, do you remember if that was concrete firms or not?
Uh I think that sounds right, because I remember Bill talking about sending a concrete curb detail to Jamie that night.
Okay, great. Uh that's all I had for the June seventeen minute, meeting minutes. Anybody else have anything?
I have nothing to add.
Hearing none. Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the June seventeenth, twenty twenty minutes as amended?
Joseph Bastiano, so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mike Kaliza.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. That's the June seventeenth meeting minutes. Um I like the uh, I like the June twenty-fourth meeting minutes. Those are uh Amy, on those, you don't have any of the participants. Is there a reason for that?
Um, hold on for just a moment. June twenty-fourth, that was the quick one. Here, it's up on the screen. On the screen, I've actually um, I've read done.
Okay.
So here they are.
Since I don't have, since I don't have a screen, I'm blind.
Oh, that's right, okay. So I've got Chris Weider, President, Joseph Bastiano, President, Donald Hanson, President.
Beautiful. Do I uh, do I have a motion to approve the June twenty-fourth meeting minutes?
So moved, Joseph Bastiano.
We have a second?
Second, Mike Kaliza.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody else in favor?
I wasn't there that night. I can't vote.
You can vote.
Okay. Well, you can vote. You can all say aye.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure about that one, Devin. I looked into that before.
All right. All right. Moving, moving on to June twenty-fifth. You guys are great, I tell you. Uh June twenty-fifth, everybody have a chance to review those meeting minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Mike. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, meeting minutes?
Yes. Joseph Bastiano, I moved that we accept the meeting minutes for June twenty-fifth.
We have a second?
Devin Howell.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
We're getting, we're getting it, guys. We're getting better with every one. I'm amazed. It's really uh amazing the learning curve here. All right, July first, twenty twenty, meeting minutes. Anybody have anything? I have nothing.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve the July first, twenty twenty, meeting minutes?
Yeah, this is Joseph Bastiano. I moved that we accept the meeting minutes for July first.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Great. I think that takes care of all the meeting minutes, Joe. Is that correct?
Do we have um, do we, yeah, I think that's all of them. That was the last one, right?
We don't have
Yeah, we don't have seven twenty.
We don't have the July twenty-second or July twenty-ninth yet.
Right, that's correct. Yes. I was just going through my list here. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Are you happy we got through those, Joe, now?
Well, I get nervous when it gets too deep of a list.
I hear you. We want to get through them all. All right. So now we um, now we have the opportunity to deliberate on the two applications we received tonight, and we've uh had public hearings on. Um is everybody in favor of trying to take care of these both this evening? Anybody have any problems with that? Anybody want to take any more time or want to get through them?
I'd like to get through them.
Same here.
Okay, great. All right. We'll start with Stephen and Janet Yvaro. And this is uh forty-six Miller Street. Um Joe, do you have some finding of facts you want to present to us right off? This is for a special permit.
Well, we have, it's an existing nonconforming structure, right?
Yep.
Um they want to, they they're proposing the twelve by twenty-two nonattached deck, ground level deck. Let's just see. Um Yeah, so none, no more in violation of any setbacks than the existing structure. Uh Noah Butters were in in objection. I don't really have any much more than that.
Nope, that's, that's very good, Joe. You got pretty much, you've gotten, you've captured
Yeah, I know.
The essence of it.
All right.
Good job.
Do you want me to read the special permit criteria?
Yeah, if you want to, that's great.
Let me see if I can pull it up. One second. I'm pulling it up again. One minute.
Not too detailed.
Okay. Okay, so the appendix, all right, so this is the special permit criteria. The use must be in harmony with general purpose and intent of the bylaw. No additional encroachment on the property line. Setbacks are the same as the existing structure. Two, the use is in appropriate location, is not detrimental to the neighborhood, and does not significantly alter the character of the zoning district. Structure is not detrimental to the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities were provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. It's a freestanding platform. That's, that's what they, that's what they answer is to that, number three. Number four, the proposed use would not be detrimental or offensive to adjoining zoning districts and neighboring properties due to the effects of lighting, odor, smoke, noise, and sewage. Uh refuse materials, visual other nuisance, uh the applicant considers it's not applicable. The proposed use would not cause undue traffic congestion in the immediate area. Same thing, not applicable, not going to create any additional traffic congestion. The proper site plan has been filed for approval with the planning board and the proper number of copies submitted with application for a special permit to the Board of Appeals. The answer is yes. And if, and the use will be, the useful purpose was consistent with the nineteen ninety master plan is most recently updated, yes.
Great. Thank you, Joe. All right. And um Amy, if you just want to make sure you update Joe with, again, they did not put the map and block in and they did not put their zoning district in, if you can make sure you provide that information to Joe.
Yep.
I wouldn't be able to finish the district with uh the decision without that information anyway.
Yep.
Right. And um, you know, they reference CE one, C two, and E one, C three. They also should probably reference F four A as well as far as the section of the zoning bylaw.
Isn't it really only F four A they need to?
Yeah, well, you know, it it's really F C, F three C and F four A. So I just, can we make sure we correct that for Joe? So he's got the proper, he's got the proper sections. And I only mention that because, as you remember, at the last meeting, we had to address, do to administrative change, the um F four B versus F four A, okay?
Yeah. And you said also F three, please?
It's um, it's F C three.
Okay.
And it's F four A. If you're, if you know, based, I mean, it's just because the way our zoning, our zoning book shows it, F C three should be corrected and it should just be F four A, but currently it has both.
Okay.
Uh, okay. And Joe, we've got, um I don't know, the only thing you didn't say, you said it's nonconforming, less nonconforming. We probably should show that it's seventeen feet from the rear setback, the existing home. Um the deck will be less than that, probably closer to nineteen feet. And that the front setback is twenty-eight feet, the deck will obviously be less than that.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any other findings of fact? Okay, I guess not. All right.
I assume there's no conditions either, Chris, like from what I can tell.
No, no, I don't think um
I mean, I guess I assume, I don't think, I guess we could have asked if they were going to be adding any I mean, I guess I assume, I don't think, I guess we could have asked if they were going to be adding any additional lighting, you know, on their property for this, but uh, again, it wouldn't be assumed to be radiating on another property.
Correct, correct. Yep. And obviously, the same thing with refuge. Um, obviously, they're going to build the deck, they're going to clean up afterwards. I'm sure they're not going to leave a pile of material on the site.
So, so I'm going, I'm going with no condi, I'm going with no conditions.
No conditions, correct. Okay. Alright, so this will be a, this will be a special permit, a motion to grant a special permit. Section FC three and F four A for a freestanding deck on a non-conforming pre-existing property. So this is a motion to grant. Mike Kaliza, a motion to grant.
Yes, to grant.
Joe Sebastiano.
Yes, to grant.
Josephine Cordera.
Somebody make the motion and somebody second.
Alright, I'll, 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 I'll move the motion if somebody would second it.
We have a, we have a second.
I'll second, Devin Howell.
Alright, any further discussion? No? Alright, so we have a, so we have a motion to second to grant. Again, Joe Sebastiano.
Yes, to grant.
Mike Kaliza.
Yes, to grant.
Josephine Cordera.
Yes, to grant.
Devin Howell.
Yes, to grant.
Christopher Weider, yes to grant. Okay, very good. Alright, Joe, I think you have everything, Joe. I think Amy's going to get you a couple of those blocks filled in, and we should be all set with that. Okay?
Yes. And I do apologize, but I have to finish up Nineteen Shire. I'll try and finish that right away and get on these right behind it.
No? That's alright. I apologize that I can't see you. Alright, the next one is uh, one twelve Myrtle Street, which um, a little more interesting. So uh, we want to address some of our findings of facts first?
Yes, I think we should, I think we should discuss that yet. No, I think we need to discuss it.
Yep, go ahead.
Going back to the plans for a moment.
Yep.
Alright. So it is an existing non-conforming structure, right?
Correct, in the front. Front yard only.
When you say front yard only, what does that mean?
It means the side yard and rear yard.
Meet the setbacks, right?
Yeah.
No, no, I'm saying that the front yard doesn't meet the setback, does it?
No, that's correct. The front yard doesn't meet the setback, and neither does the rear yard meet the setback.
Right. Got it.
Actually, that's, that's incorrect. The current rear yard does meet the setback. The addition would not meet the setback requirement. So the front yard is, the current house does not meet the, the front yard does not meet the current setback, but the rear yard does. Um, the addition does not meet the current setback requirement.
And, and it goes to Devin's point. I agree. Yes, Devin was correct.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, but that's the reason for the variance, because they want to encroach on the rear setback.
Correct. And they want to encroach by, it looks like one point seven feet, or?
That's correct.
I think it's, what do you, what do you say? It's twenty, yeah.
Twenty-two point three is the setback they're proposing.
Right, thanks, thanks, Devin.
Uh, just to double check, twenty-three point three, am I correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Twenty-three point three.
And the side setback is twenty-five point five.
Yep.
Okay. It's an existing home built in eighteen oh two. Appears as if there may have been an addition sometime in the seventies or eighties. In the R three district.
Um, there was no Abutter opposition to the variance?
There was actually, there was actually support.
Letter of support from the, from the uh, Abutter.
I, I think, just want to note both, both of that, those facts.
Yep, yep, yep. No opposition and a letter of support. Got it.
Uh, is it worth noting in the facts that the applicant seeked to obtain the land from the Abutter?
Yes, it's, that's very important. Yep.
Making that note.
Um, the existing bump out that they want to square off, uh, the applicant said was too small and dysfunctional such that it is an unusable space.
Correct.
Could you repeat that, Devin?
Uh, the existing bump out that they want to square off, the applicant said is too small and dysfunctional such that it, it is unusable.
Just a note on that, when you say unusable, I mean, I might have missed that when they presented it. Were you saying that that land really isn't available for anything else, right?
No, 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 they're saying that the room, the room that's pre, already existing is unusable. It's too small for them to use it for anything. So they, they've done nothing to it because it's not large enough for any use for them. Not the land, the, the existing structure at the rear of the house, Joe.
Okay, but that's, that's with, that's before they're bumping it out, right?
Correct.
Cor, correct. Hence the reason why they want to, hence why they want to bump it out.
Okay.
Uh, the lot is, is, is actually tri, almost triangulally shaped because of the large, the forty-five degree turn it takes at the rear of the lot.
Now you're getting into the, now you're getting into the variance worksheet type.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying it's a triangular lot. I'll put that down as a finding of fact.
Got it.
Also, I think another important fact is, uh, due to the topography in the exposed foundation wall, they said that they were having pipes freeze in the wintertime.
Okay. Exposed foundation wall. Alright, I got that.
Okay. Okay, any other findings of facts?
Do we note the size of the addition?
Yeah, uh,
The size, I think.
It's thirteen, can you see that in the plans, guys? Thirteen point five? Let me make that.
Seven point eight feet.
Yeah, thirteen point five by seven point eight, right?
Yes, and those are feet, decimal feet.
Got it.
Sorry, right. Thirteen and thirteen sixteenths, right, Devin?
Say it again?
I said thirteen and thirteen, and thirteen sixteenths, correct?
I, I, I don't know what that is in inches.
Well, I'm going thirteen point five by seven point eight.
Alright.
Feet.
Yep. I think we've uh, I think we've captured most of the findings of facts.
That's uh, everything I had written down.
Right.
Yep, that's pretty much everything I have. Alright.
I don't have the variance worksheet. Uh, does Amy maybe have that to put on the screen?
Can you see it?
Oh, okay, hold on. I, I don't have it on your, I can't see it on your screen.
You can't see it?
I don't see the variance worksheet. Let me see, oh wait, I gotta bring, wait, I'll bring it back, hold on.
What do you see?
Uh, here I am. I see it now.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's alright.
Okay.
You want to go through those, Joe?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. Hold on. Amy, did you, is this in the uh, the, the documents for tonight?
It's, yes, it's part of the application.
Okay, I probably downloaded, I did download the application and look at the sheet specifically, yeah, okay. Alright. The variance must be with respect to a particular land or structures. Uh, the, 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 the parcel land is one twelve Myrtle Street, uh, structures a small addition. Let me check this, hold on. Fully. Does that say that fully? Can you read that? Falls about, okay, falls about one and a half feet short of twenty-five.
About one and a half short of the twenty-five foot setback.
Alright, which, yeah, that's for a reason for the variance, yes. It must, it must be circumstance relating to soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. Uh, proposed addition does not necessitate?
That's what it says.
Yeah, I think, I don't think he understood the question, but I think we can, I think this is where we can deliberate. I think, I think, you know, Devin, I like, I like what Devin said about topography. But I think, I think obviously shape is the biggest consideration here. This is, this is obviously not consistent with most property lots. You know, we don't, we don't see them take this kind of sharp turn to the left like this. And, you know, for what was the reason why someone did not continue the property line straight back and then go across, yeah, I don't understand it, but it, it certainly, I think this is, at least in my, what, eleven years on the board, I don't think we have found too many properties that would more qualify for a variance based on the triangular shape of this lot.
No, I, this is Joe, I agree, it's a shape issue. Um, not being able to just square off the house like that, you know, and only needing to violate it by one and a half feet, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, so for that circumstance, I, I think it would, you know, we're not sending any particular presidents here.
No, I think the shape certainly, and I, and, and I think if you, if you look at the, at the, the angle where it does jot out to a forty-five, you know, any, any shift in either the, the going to the rear, or even that angle, would have prevented them requiring this variant. So I think the shape of this lot certainly uh, is paramount to why this variance request is obviously warranted. And um, I think the topography issue that Devin brought up is also another good one, that they obviously sustain freezing pipes because of the, it's a brick foundation wall, that they obviously can't um, they uh, they, they, at this current time, they haven't addressed. But um, I think certainly, the fact that the uh, that is exposed, and um, I think that also actually pertains to it, but I think the shape is paramount to why this variance uh, is required. And it doesn't suppress it, and again, we don't see too many lots that are shaped like this outside of a corner lot. I think um, usually when we see uh, standard lots are usually rectangles or squares, so I think shape certainly pertains to this, in this case.
Yeah, I, I support the shape, uh, the shape issue.
Yep.
Anybody have any?
I don't remember three, Joe.
Alright, and then number three says, little enforcement of the provisions above the bylaw would involve uh, substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant. Uh, I'm trying to read their writing here, not not securing, what is that? Oh, not squaring, uh, proposed addition to extend building does present added construction details and would not be ideal.
Ideal.
Right, so meaning if he had, if he had to do something other than squaring off the structure, it would be a hardship for him. Is that what I'm understanding here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's what he's trying to say, but what I think, I think what he means is, or what he's, really the hardship, because obviously, we all deal with this more than they are. The hardship is the room is unusable. So they own this property, they have this structure, and it's basically unusable. So the hardship caused is that this room could not be used uh, consistent with the rest of the house or the property.
Right.
Because of its uh, because of its shortcomings, um, due to the, due to when it was built.
Okay, got it.
Because a hardship can't be a cost issue. Hardship can't be a mortgage issue. A hardship can't be an emotional issue. It's got to pertain to the shape, the topography.
Right.
For the soil conditions. In this case, it's the shape prevents them from using this room in a manner of consistency with the uh, the zoning.
Right, and dealing with the uh, and dealing with the, the issue of freezing pipes, et cetera.
Correct.
Okay. Want me to go number four?
Yes.
Okay. Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent or purpose of such bylaw. The relief would be being able to have the proposed addition uh, go out additional one and a half feet, makes most, again, I'm sorry you can't read this clearly, guys. Makes most sense, okay, sense, architecturally, architecturally and for the building process as well as interiorous basis. Are we good with that, that kind of general description?
Yeah, I think, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We don't have any, we had no, as Devin pointed out, we had no opposition from Abutters. We had a, we had a uh, support letter. And as you pointed out, Joe, is that we do not set a precedent by this variance um, based on de minimis encroachment. We don't, we don't base it on the fact that uh, on, on de minimis encroachment, we're basing it on the fact that this shape of this lot is different than what we would expect to see in the zoning district.
Got it.
Any further discussion on this?
I, I think we captured everything we needed to capture in the findings of act.
Thank you, Devin.
I, I, I did want to say that I do agree with everyone that this isn't the usual, I'm not partial to um, variance applications, but this is a unique situation. The shape is unique. I, I mean, I, I also want to say that, just for the sake of it, that I understand if, even if it's five inches or ten inches, I understand completely why an Abutter wouldn't want to sell or change their lot. So that's understandable too, so.
Right, but it is good that the Abutter is in support of this, and it is a very, very minor uh, request of encroachment, very de minimis, as was said earlier. And I, being on this board, at least, Chris mentioned, I've been on the board much longer than that, we haven't given away or given many variances here.
No, I think um, I think in my time, we've given, I think, one, Joe.
Yeah.
I don't know how many you gave prior to that, but I think we gave one on Park Street in my eleven years.
Yeah, I said, we haven't given many. I, I don't remember writing many of those out.
Yeah. Alright. That being said, do I have a, again, this is a, this is a motion to grant. Do I have a motion to grant a variance request for MGL chapter forty-eight, section sent as amended, section E one B of the Northbrook zoning bylaws to allow the construction of the rear of a building, which will violate the rear setback of twenty-five feet, property located at one twelve Myrtle Street, such as map nine, block thirty-two, lot twenty-nine, in the R three zoning district. This is a motion to grant. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, I, motion, Joe Sebastiano.
Uh, do we have a second?
Devin Howell, second.
Any further discussion? Hey, this is again, this is a motion, this is a vote to grant. Uh, Michael Kaliza.
Yes, to grant.
Josephine Cordera.
Yes, to grant.
Devin Howell.
Yes, to grant.
Joe Sebastiano.
Yes, to grant.
Christopher Weider, yes to grant. Okay, very good. Joe, I think you've got everything you need to write that one off.
Yes, I do. And Amy, thank you for having all the documents on tonight's uh, you know, agenda. I was able to pull them down right away.
Yep, you bet.
Does anybody um, does anybody have any other business for the board this evening?
Hearing none. What's our next meeting, by the way?
Next meeting is August nineteenth.
That's Abby Bill and um, finalizing the decision for one forty-four to come.
Thank you.
And, and I know um, I know the applicant for Abby Bill. Amy, has he um, has uh, the developer Todd DeBlasso provided you with a color schematic yet of Abby Bill?
No.
Okay, I think he's working on that. I think he's close to having a color, so look out for that. I think they've, they've, I think if you all remember at the last hearing, we asked them to update his uh, his uh, plan, so we could see that at our next hearing, which I think he's done, and he's going to put some color to it. So Amy, if you want to look out for that, make sure the board gets it next week when it comes in.
Okay, will do.
Uh, any other business? Tim, Tim, Tim Martin's going to be out for the month of August, but he's not going to be able to participate, but um, we're hoping he's back for September. So um, Tim will not be, the reason Tim's not here tonight, he won't be here for the month of August, but again, hopefully returning in September. Um, with that, could I have a motion to close the zoning board of appeals meeting of August fifth, two thousand twenty, at eight twenty PM?
So moved. Joe Sebastiano.
Second.
Devin Howell, second.
Any further discussion? I think we did very good tonight. I mean, man, I'm surprised. We got through two uh, public hearings, voted on them, and uh, good job, guys. So, all those in favor, closing the, closing the zoning board of appeals meetings, say aye. Mike Kaliza.
Aye.
Mike Kaliza. Wake up, wake up, Mike. Joe Sebastiano.
Aye, Joe.
Devin Howell.
Aye.
Josephine Cordera.
Aye.
Christopher Weider. Christopher Weider, aye. Amy, thank you very much. Everybody have a good evening. Again, sorry, my Zoom connection's not working.
Have a good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Take care.